I'd like to call this meeting of the Human Services Committee to order. Roll call, please, Chris.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to our meeting. Next item on the agenda are additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have citizens to be heard. Chris, did we have any people, anybody turning on requests to speak? There'll be other opportunities for people to address the commission at the other committee Under Updates, we're here tonight to hear a presentation from the United Way. I think we have a couple representatives with us. Please, please join us at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Danny Nagin. I am a, I'm the campaign chair for the United Way for this year. I am a city, or excuse me, I'm a resident of the city of Marysville, very proud of that. I'm here today to first say thank you. We could not do what we do without the county. We appreciate so much, very, very much, the county employees that have participated in the United Way. Especially want to thank Jenny Posey and Carrie for their involvement and helping to bring forth change that we're trying to do with the United Way this year. Real briefly, I volunteer for this opportunity because I've been involved now with the United Way for close to 15 years, and in my 15 years, I have watched our campaign go from $1.8 million in revenue down to $1.2 million in revenue. And that's not anybody's fault, that's just what the scoreboard says. But what I've had to do is sit back and watch, as being a very integral part of the process of the United Way, I've gotten to watch how we have frankly been able to not serve the needs of our community. Last year, we had $200,000 of requests that we had to simply say no to because we didn't have the funding to be able to help. Now, we helped 12,000 residents across our county last year. 12,000 people that we helped. So that, that's, so to help everybody in the room understand what that means, that means folks in our senior population that we're bringing aid to. That means the people that are victims of domestic violence that we're bringing aid to. That our youth in our county who go home and have no food in the fridge, they're surrounded by drugs and violence, we are bringing aid and giving them a better environment through our affiliated organizations that we partner with. We're providing medical equipment for people who can't have it. We're providing prescription drugs for people who can't afford it. That's the impact that we have in St. Clair County, and I am so proud of our United Way and the impact that we have taking care of one another. And frankly, from my seat, I can't sit by any longer and watch as the need grows in our county for assistance, to watch the funding continue to go backwards, simply because I believe people don't understand why they give to the United Way of St. Clair County. And I'm on a mission to change that, ladies and gentlemen. I'm on a mission to help everyone in our county understand that when they give a dollar to the United Way, it goes to impact a family in St. Clair County. All the money that is given stays in our county, and we are extremely proud of that track record. We are extremely proud of the work that our affiliated organizations do in our county to make a difference in the lives that people need it most. On my mission, I'm asking everyone to join us. The theme of our campaign is "Together, We Can't Fail." And it will be up to us, St. Clair County residents, standing together, shoulder to shoulder, hand in hand, coming together as a community to take care of one another. That's what it is, that's why I'm so passionate about what this organization does. And I really, today, just want to say thank you for your participation, thank you for your support, thank you for your commitment to making St. Clair County the very best county in the state of Michigan. Thank you and God bless.
I would just like to respond as chairman of the Human Service Committee to say that, as I know that most people are aware, we're very involved in providing human services across the county. We, we take advantage of a lot of the state and federal programs for mal illness, for families, for children, and I think we, we play an important role. But there are many gaps. We, we're accessing, most, most of that money is generated by the state and federal governments. And we are proud of the fact that we leverage that for the benefit of our citizens. But there are gaps that are created that there aren't federal and state programs for, and the United Way plays a key role in filling those gaps. Many people have problems that just don't align with the federal, state and federal programs, and we really appreciate the United Way as being an important community partner. Thank you. Next, are there any conceptual initiatives? I don't see any old business. The next item we have is a Department of Human Services reappointment.
I would move the reappointment of Tom Seepa.
Support.
Are we giving final action to that?
No, this would be to move on to the final board, to the board.
I'll make a motion forward to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Is it, any comments?
We do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have a Staff Development Day memo from the Health Department. This is a routine matter. Every year, they have a Staff Development Day, and it requires approval of the board.
I would move that we approve the Health Department Service Day on December 8th after, at noon.
I would second that motion to send it on to the full board.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, for, are there any other human service matters to come before the Human Service Committee this evening? Hearing none. We have, for information only, the Health Department September points of interest.
Motion to receive and file.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would someone like to make a motion to receive and file the packets?
I would make that motion.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the committee adjourn.
You can't make that motion.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Call the meeting of the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have motion in support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion heard. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Updates. Carrie, animal control requests for proposals.
Sure. At the last meeting, the board requested that administration develop an RFP to explore the possibility of having a nonprofit come in and operate our animal shelter. At this point, the RFP has been drafted. It's currently with Corporation Counsel for review. There's a few small tweaks to the language. We anticipate that this will be posted sometime next week, once we get the details worked out with Corporation Counsel. We are looking at having a walkthrough sometime the week of October 23rd that would allow any interested bidders to come, walk through, tour, and see our facility so they know the type of facility they have and what they would be bidding on as far as the services.
What was that date, October 23rd?
The date hasn't been set yet. We're still trying to coordinate the date with the sheriff's office, but we intend to do that the week of October 23rd is the week we're aiming for. And then, the, the proposals will be open for approximately 30 days after it's posted. So sometime mid-November, we should have final proposals. Any questions?
Just, I'm gonna make a couple comments here. We got a chance to sit down with Jackie earlier today, and we talked a little bit about this. We just really talked about the, looking to, if there's any improvements possible out there. A lot of the commissioners went on a lot of different tours. We've been to LaPierre, we've been to McCollum, we've been to Genesee, Washington, all of those types of things. And the facility, I think some of the commissioners were under impression that our facilities were substandard, not after getting the opportunity to walk through St. Clair County to see what some of the other communities have. We have a, we have a much nicer facility than some of the communities I have named. But it really comes down to, are there different programs? Are there things that, you know, are happening of the day? I always talk about 14 years ago, when I was on the board, versus 14 years later, how, you know, how pet situations are handled. I mean, I know we just recently, we were talking earlier, Oakland County's building a 15 and a half million dollar facility down there, and Dave just asked me, he says, "How much did our convention center cost to build?" Nine. So, put some things in perspective, you know? So, it's just, we're gonna go up for requests for proposals. We're going to continue to obviously operate the shelters, but we're open for suggestions. You know, if there's different ways we can improve, it's no different. I'm not picking on Kathy, but airport, you know, years ago, when we talked about the airport, and we use that as our example today. We, we're looking to make improvements, to make changes, you know, it's kind of, we, we as commissioners have this list of probably 30 different things that we go through and just, you know, do, do things need attention, do, you know, things have changed, so it's, it's not, and the sheriff's part of this process. The sheriff's sitting with us, he's going to be part of this as we discuss, you know, moving forward and stuff. So this isn't, they're, they're, it's not they're doing a bad job, is there other opportunities to partner up? We have seen in some of our neighboring counties, Greg, you're talking about Sandlot County, you know, they're four, four, five million dollars, right, on a facility that they're, they're building, and they're-
That's what they're talking.
And they're partnering, a lot of these communities are partnering with other agencies, and they've had the ability to raise some substantial funds. So, it's the, let's see what's out there, let's see what may exist. So when we talk about requests for proposals, it's, you know, see what's out there.
Yeah, we did keep the bids fairly open. We, we modeled our RFP after Midland and Muskegon, who use a similar model. However, we wanted to keep it open to any agency that might want to propose a different sort of service model, so they're not confined to proposing and operating it in one specific way. It keeps it open for all proposals.
Just, just one comment. When we went over to Genesee County, met over in Flint, and the thing that impressed me the most, that we don't have yet, and that was a volunteer coordinator at the animal shelter, to walk the dogs and that sort of thing. And that's extremely important, to get them out of the cage, take them out for a walk, you know, and socialize with them, you know? Because if they go out for adoption, and they, you know, they haven't had those experiences, can make it a unsuccessful adoption, so to speak. So that was a neat program. I think that's something we definitely need to look at incorporating.
I think currently, a lot of our volunteers aren't necessarily volunteers, but they're prisoners. So, you know, whether they're there on their own free, I, I mean, they're there because they have to be under good behavior, or they wouldn't be allowed to leave, but-
Yeah, that's-
So that, that does create a few issues as far as, you know, crossing that line when you have the prisoners in there that are doing the work, and they do it, they do a very nice job, and then bringing in the people from the outside. So, there has to be some different timelines when-
Protocol setup.
Yeah, and, and I know they're working on that, so.
Anybody have anything else?
I do.
Yes.
I do have one more thing. I just want to let everyone know that the sheriff's office has been working with a group of volunteers, and next weekend, the county will be participating in the Empty the Shelters event sponsored by Bissell Foundation. So next Saturday, if you are looking to adopt a pet, in the St. Clair Pet Plaza, all of our animals will be down there, and all adoption fees will be waived and paid for by the Bissell Foundation.
Very nice.
So I can make a motion that every commissioner's gotta adopt the animal?
So you said there's an opening in District 1? Because if I bring home a pet, my wife's gonna kill me.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Conceptual initiatives?
None.
None. Seeing no old business, under new business. Emergency management performance grant agreement. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that- Well, we got, we're gonna get some information. Oh, well. Thanks, and maybe after I hear this information, I won't want to make the motion. Right.
I was gonna tell you how old I am. This grant's been around for over 30 years. Really, it's based on a percentage of the director's salary and benefits. Usually comes out right in the 40 to 44 percent. But as any grant, there are requirements, and we have to submit a annual work plan, which basically says this is what we're gonna do in the upcoming year. The chairperson signs that, we submit it quarterly. We've met everything throughout the years. It's just a little help to make sure the programs stay on track and some funding. It's not a lot, but it's better than nothing.
That's nice. Okay, don't go anywhere. Now, I would make a motion that this item be sent on to the next full board meeting.
Second.
Motion in support. All in favor? Any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. You know, you promote the being prepared for 72 hours in case of an event.
Yes.
I'm looking at the situation down in Puerto Rico. They went on a week, that's, that's almost, what, 140, 150, 160 hours.
I can tell you, we just participated in an exercise, and we had two commissioners present, and the county was in trouble after five days.
After five days?
Yes. So, there's a lot of work to be done, but we're a very complacent society. It won't happen here. If it happens here, it won't be that bad. And the one I always love, if it's bad, government will be here to take care of us.
Well, you know, there's a lot of truth to that, and I think the government was there to help out. They dropped everything off, but then there was no infrastructure to get it anywhere. And when you look at the damage that's done, they have just very, very antiquated, you know, their poles are tipped over and broken, they're, they're small skinny poles, and they have nine wires hanging on them, and, you know, they, they have a lot more issues than, the storm is, was a huge issue that is showing all the gaping holes that they had.
Yeah, and then, in addition to that, because of the terrain, many of the roads were washed out.
Washed out.
Dams were compromised, the reservoirs.
Commissioner Rushing?
Just a quick one. My wife and I were gonna look at potentially someplace down south. Florida was in the consideration. Florida's no longer in the consideration, so we looked for a place, we're potentially down in Tennessee, but I think we're very fortunate, Michigan, you've had some, you know, you go back in history, some horrendous tornadoes, but for us to hit the can, cash drop, get hit in Puerto Rico, I'm not sure that could happen here anyway, so.
I agree with you. I was fortunate to give a presentation to the NIMAC Group, which is the northern states and provinces, and we talked about St. Clair County and Canada, but part of their, their process is they go around the table and they talk about what's happening. You know, and I'm just sitting here saying, holy cow. I came to Michigan, they said, "Well, we've got a little flooding in the central state," and that was it. And you're talking forest fires, just flooding, unbelievable in the other states, so we're fortunate so far to be in Michigan.
Good. All right, so we had motion in support. One more- Mr. Chairman, just one more comment. I think there is some comparison between Puerto Rico and Michigan. Puerto Rico's problems are so much worse than Texas or Florida because they're, they're an island. Yes. But in terms of Michigan being a peninsula, you know, we would have bigger challenges as well, because we don't have power lines and gas mains and everything coming from all four directions. We're, we're a peninsula, and, and we're, we're, we're subject to, you know, geographic challenges and, and a foreign country on our borders.
It, it is challenging. I mean, this area in particular is very unique, and a lot of our, most of our risk is in a foreign country, and it's tough to do your job when, you know, even the funding, FEMA does not consider across the river as a threat to us, so that threat isn't included in our funding formula, and that, that's very difficult.
Interesting. Stay put. Okay, we have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. While Jeff's up here, item C, 7C, the 2017 Port Security Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do this for final action, that we approve the 2017 Port Securities Grant Agreement for emergency services, emergency management. I don't have the figure in front of me.
Support.
Motion in support, questions?
25 percent match on that?
25 percent match for, but it's being matched with, Jeff?
In-kind services from the vendor, they're going to install the system for free. No charge to us.
No out-of-pocket money for the county.
Dollar figure is 41,246.
No other questions? Motion in support? Oh, we need roll call for final, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes. One more item. If you want to talk about our Youth Advisory Committee, they received, FEMA's been busy, they, they have a lot of different things going on with, with the storms involved, but they gave an award out to our, our group.
Yes, our office submitted a nomination for youth preparedness, and a lot of that focuses on the Youth Readiness Council. Much deserving, they've created several things, they've worked with Council on Aging, but we also have adult volunteers that are supporting the kids, doing events when the kids are in school, so we did receive an honorable mention. I thought that was, was quite good, especially after I read some of the, the award winners, and it's like, well, they deserve it to win. No doubt in my mind that we're good, but they were excellent, so. But for the kids, I think it's an honor, and it just shows that we're trying to get more youth involved.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Rushing, you had a question?
I'm a member of our dive team president.
Yeah.
You want to run it up and give us a-
For the next president, for the next one. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to item 7B, the Port Security Grant Agreement for the dive team. Would you like to come up and give us some information?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Andrew Wagner, I'm standing in for Chief Bruce Tate. He's traveling right now, looking at one of our, our new projects, a new boat being built out west, so. What we're looking at doing is, we've, we've got a grant, looking for permission to, for your approval. It is going to buy software for the dive team and sonar equipment that will allow us to make a map of the bottom of the river. So if we're looking for a target, whether it be, whether it be a body on the bottom or evidence in a crime, we can go out and, and map, and it's, it's basically like painting a topographical map of the bottom of the river. And then we can go back and we can look at that data and zoom in on objects, measure objects, narrow down our search area, so we're not out trying to dive a mile-long stretch of the St. Clair River in high currents, looking for maybe a handgun. Small, small target to find in the river. So this'll help us narrow it down, get us a much quicker image of the bottom than what we can do now, and be able to hopefully find the target we're looking for in a timely manner. So we're looking at some sonar pole equipment, that is, to mount the sonar on the boat, and software that will do the actual overlays of the bottom as we're driving up and down the river.
Very good. This is 100 percent match?
I'll make a motion-
Or, excuse me, a 0 percent match, 100 percent funding.
Correct.
Make a motion that this is for final action. The dollar figure is 20,250. Since it's less than 25,000, there's no match, but if necessary, it will be covered.
Yep, if necessary, the nonprofit of the dive team will cover whatever's over the grant allowance.
Support. We have motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other judiciary public safety matters at this time? Seeing none, information only, we have receive and file.
I move we receive and file packets.
Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to adjourn. So move-
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Period. Attorney. Howard. Howard?
I don't have to go far.
The right thing is in control.
There you go. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Then, clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
President?
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
At this time, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, motion carries. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. We have just a very short one from Jeffrey on the Brownfield Assessment Grant we've got. We went through the last one, which was a million dollars. Once it started, it went fast.
Indeed, yes, yeah, that, we received that grant back in 2010, and the one that I'm referencing this evening is from the same category of funding at EPA, but back in 2010, we did apply for a million dollars, and so lo and behold, we got it. We were very surprised by it, because it's a very competitive out of funding, and we were, it took us a little while to get up to speed back then, we were just coming out of the recession, and the nature of the EPA assessment grants is that they're development-driven, and there just wasn't a lot of developers knocking at the door then. It took a little while, but all you have to do is drive around town, up and down the shoreline, from Algonack to Birchville, and you'll see, and out west, and you will see that, that's certainly changed, and it's still going on, so we, there's pressure coming, coming to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to, to keep the program moving forward, and fortunately, we were able to get another round of funding committed to us by EPA. We applied at the end of last year, received notice at the end of May, and entered in cooperative agreement with them late last month with EPA for a $400,000 assessment grant. So what that requires us to do, the next steps, is the, the nature of the grant and the rules of the, these EPA assessment grants, we have to go out for bid for what they call a qualified environmental consultant. Last time, we worked with a consultant that we hired after going through a review process, we had, I, I believe about 20 applications last time, and ironically, I just checked with the process this time. The RFQP is out for bid right now to hire a qualified consultant, and it's on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, Mitten, which is what the county uses for a lot of our bid processes. And I think over 20, 21 firms have pulled or downloaded the RFQP, if that gives you any idea what type of response we might get. It is, responses to the proposal are due back on the 13th, Friday the 13th, and a bid opening will be occurring later that day. Because we have developers knocking at the door, and there's pressure, if you will, to move, get these, these funds out there in the community, get these projects moving forward, we've got a very aggressive timeframe, if you will. It was 18-day term. It was an 18-day turnaround on release of the RFQP and submittals due, which is Friday the 13th, and we hope that next week, the week of October 16th, to actually go through the bids and interview, invite for interview firms that have gone through an initial selection process for interview. Staff is working on putting together a five-person bid, technical bid review team, we did that last time and it seemed to work quite well. And if all goes well, I plan on coming back to the committee at their first meeting in November for final action with a recommendation of a consultant as made by the Technical Review Committee, as well as a, as well as a draft contract for final approval, hopefully at that committee meeting in November. So tonight, I'm not seeking any action, but I wanted to give the committee an update on what will be requested for final action at the next committee meeting instead of going to the next full board meeting. And it's, again, to keep with the timeframe, because if we don't stick to that timeframe, then we'll go out another month and the nature of development, especially with these Brownfield grants, these assessment grants, a lot of the work we do upfront is during the due diligence phase of a, of a development. And in Michigan, as some of you might know, you're required, if you're acquiring property, you're required to go through the environmental assessment process and if you're seeking liability protection, if you will, for any type of contamination that might exist on the property or the facility that you're acquiring, you're required to document that and submit that through certain documentation to the State of Michigan DEQ within thirty, forty-five days of acquisition. So if we don't get it taken care of in this timeframe, we go out another month and we might miss a handful of projects that are already knocking at the door, if you will. So, so we look forward to sticking to the tight timeframe, hopefully we can get through the interview process the week of the 16th and coming back to this committee first week in November with a recommendation of a consultant, as well as a draft contract for approval.
Who was on the selection committee and what did you...
Yes, so right now, it is, it's five, five people. The county's grant accountant, Deana Alderace, Deana's very familiar with the rules of the grant, so it seemed, it seemed very relevant to have her on there. David Struck, the director of the Metroplanning Commission, he's also a member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. John Osborne, city manager of Yale and also chairperson of the county's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And David Haynes, the planning director over in the City Port Huron. They happen to be the City Port Huron by mere fact that most of the development requests that are coming into the county were focusing on properties in the City Port Huron. The City of Huron was the largest recipient of grant funds last time around, so it made sense to have them involved in the process.
I sat on that selection piece of it before. Howard, were you on there too? I know they had a couple commissioners, they brought some different people in at the time. This scope of work at that particular time was out of the wheelhouse of our local firms, okay? So the requirements at that, because obviously, we're always sensitive about, you know, the local participation. I don't know if that has changed.
Okay.
But at, at that particular time, out of those 18, I think it was 18 respondents, called 20, we didn't get local participation because there was not, you know, they didn't have the qualifications to do it. Obviously, we've learned a lot from when we got the first initial pot of money and how things work and so on and so forth. It's been a very successful programming, assisting, a lot of different projects, many of them that everyone in this room's been part of, from your Marine City Hotel stuff to St. Clair and to, you know, Convention Center stuff, to you name it. So it's all good stuff.
Yeah, it was, the million dollars performed close to 100 site assessments and Brownfield planning projects last time around, but the real number was in the jobs created or retained and the dollars leveraged. In other words, the Brownfield grant typically tends to be the first one in on a redevelopment project, but as we've seen in many of these other projects, MEDC gets involved, DEQ gets further involved with other grants and loans and whatnot. So you add all these dollars together that, on various projects that were, the Brownfield Redevelopment Assessment Grant was sort of the first in, if you will, and the dollars leveraged is well north of 100 million dollars, of the million dollars that we received in the county, which is a big number for this community.
When I was, when I was in DC probably two months ago, there was a segment of this that talked about Brownfield redevelopment. Kalamazoo County was there and Jackson County were there, they were also recipients of this grant. So I actually pulled them aside and we had about a 15-minute conversation as far as, you know, how things work for them, so on and so forth. And ironically, they had the same vendor that we did at the time and they had tremendous success over in those other counties too, so all good stuff.
And just to speak a little bit towards your comment about the vendor and, and how it worked last time and, and what, how it may work this time, the EPA does require us to go out for bid, competitive bid for a qualified, what they define, and they have a definition of what they define as a qualified consultant. So that's part of what we write into the bid, the definition of what they consider to be a qualified consultant. And furthermore, the way the grant works, if a developer comes to us and says, I need help performing a Phase 1 and possibly a Phase 2, we can't just go out and select somebody on a whim at the time, bring them in, have them perform it and reimburse them, because they have to go, anybody that is reimbursed to this grant, any consultant or contractor is reimbursed to this grant, has to go through a QUAP, I love all these acronyms, a QUAP process, a Quality Assurance Plan something, process. It's a two-month turnaround on that QUAP approval. And as I explained earlier, the nature of development, 35 to 40 days, 35 to 45 days turnaround to get your protections under, under Michigan's law as far as Brownfield liability, those two timelines don't align each other. So it's important that we get the consultants or consultants on board at the front end of the process. And then if we, if need be, I guess that could be revisited throughout the grant, but I did ask the EPA about that and they said, we've never actually midstream seen a situation where we approved additional QUAPs, it's just...
And I'm glad you touched on that because when we went out and we awarded at this time, I could assure you that every environmental company in St. Clair called me complaining why they didn't get any of the work and hence, they weren't qualified, part of the program, those types of things. So as we moved down this path, and after we sat down and explained the program and those types of things, but it was, it was, you know, at that particular time, like I said, there wasn't local qualified contractors for the federal program, so. Okay, any other questions for Jeffrey? If not, thank you.
Thank you, I look forward to being back here in November with a recommendation.
Okay, at this time, we have the annual airport report. Kathy said she had all kinds of good news for us, so.
Just this afternoon, I put a little annual report that Chris created for us on the desk just so that we can kind of...
Kathy, excuse me, we've got this air system going here...
Because I'm short, I'm sorry. This afternoon, I put a little, just an annual report that Chris created for us, just so that we can kind of, I just want to go over it lately, I'm not going to take a lot of your time. The first page is basically the airport operations cost for the last seven years and you'll see that for 2016, our shortfall was 112,000 dollars. So we're doing much, much better. The next, and that's basically all the expenses, all the revenues of the airport itself. Next sheet is the financial report for aviation services only. And the reason I'm, that we've been dividing that is because, I guess, since you decided to go into the FBO business, I'm kind of looking at it as, as that we are in the FBO business, so I feel that it should be separated so that you can see the revenue that we're getting from the aviation services. This is not just from Aviation Express, this is all your rental, this is all, this is no ground leases, but it's all the aircraft rental tenants and the big blue hangar and stuff like that, the corporate hangar. So we're in a profit of 65,000 dollars for our aviation services. Our fuel sales, like I was just telling Commissioner Bowman, are down 11,000 or so, but that was because we lost our private charter pilot, as everybody knows, this, this year. And, you know, we lost his revenue from that and the two King Airs that he had based at our airport.
And when he lost, he had passed away, so it wasn't...
Yeah, sorry. So I don't know if you have any questions on...
Any questions from commissioners?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rushing?
Looking at your subsidies, it looks like would be approximately 177,000 if I got the math right. The debt's avoided for the fuel sales with a 65,701 dollar surplus. Made that amount of money net profit.
Yes, but that's not just fuel sales. That is all your hangar rentals, that's anything that's handling fees, landing fees, fuel sales, anything that has anything to do with an aviation service.
Would you have off the top of your head the difference between fuel last year and this year?
The, the revenue?
Yes.
I can get that for you.
If you have it, just, if not, I just want to know, because I, we're doing better out there and I just want to...
I'll get it for you. I'll get it for you. The next page is basically, the State of Michigan Office of Aeronautics has got a new system that they're calling Aviation Management System Plan and it's actually, I've been working with them quite, quite heavily this past three or four months. It's an awesome program because basically what it's going to do, and they'll be updating it every year for us, but what it does is it's going to give, what they're projecting as our growth for the airport itself. So if you look at the second graph there on the sheet, you'll see that we dropped with our total airport operations, you know, pretty, pretty heavily there, 2010 to 2015. You can see that we've started to slowly grow and climb back up from 220, 2020 to 2035, you can see that we're slowly going to go back up with, with our operations, meaning the employments take off and landing. Same thing with the total based aircraft, we've kind of stayed kind of uniform with that, but you can see that they're predicting, this is State of Michigan Office of Aeronautics, that we are going to slowly climb up on that also. Today, we have 95 based airplanes at the airport. The next sheet is basically what State of Michigan is considering a airport report card, and I'm really proud of this because we have met every goal that they're asking for, except if you look down to the halfway down, the aircraft mechanic is not based there and we just signed that contract with Commit Aviation nine months ago. So we've basically complied with every goal that they're asking for out of their eight established goals that the Office of Aeronautics is, is asking for.
Kathy, how's he doing out there with that?
He's doing, he's doing good. Yes, he is, he is really doing good. He's got two airplanes in there tonight, so yeah, he's doing good. Frank Ludwig is...
Does he have all those certifications you need to take care of every aircraft that comes in?
Not a lot, not jets or twins and stuff like that, but we'll start slow. So the next sheet is, again, Commissioner Heidemann, we've always talked about the community benefit assessment. As you know, in 2014, when we did this, we, the airport itself had a 60 million dollar impact on the county as their economic benefit to the county. And for the, the state, we had a 61 million dollar economic benefit to the state. As of today, which this is 2016, you guys should, we all should be very proud of this, today we have a local economic impact on the county. The airport has an economic impact of 100, of 110 million dollars, oh, sorry, 1,010 dollars, for the local based and then the state is 115 million dollars based on the state. This program that, again, is in their new Michigan-based system, so this can be updated every year now. And we did a visitor's survey, probably nine months out of 2016, and it came back that every visitor that landed at the airport, that did business in the county of St. Clair, spent 249 dollars on an average here in the county. So it was substantial amount of money that they, their, the benefit assessment, the factors that they're, they're doing it on is basically the location, what the airport features, what we have for them, our activity again, our employments, our based aircraft, our industrial park is, is, which I've been working with the EDA, we just recertified the business park yesterday. And, you know, they're, they're employing 195 employment in the industrial park itself, so they go by that and the tax that it's generated by the aviation-related tax that they're getting. So we've really jumped on our community benefit assessment, so that's a pretty cool... Then again, the last page is basically, we're being, we are being considered a Tier 1 airport, meaning that we are meeting all the goals of this Michigan Aviation System Plan that they're asking for us. So again, this is, you can see that there are several of them that are Tier 1 and Tier 3, but we are meeting the goals for, to be a Tier 1 airport. I attended Airport Managers Conference last month. We were finally approved, they came in and toured, Chris, you know they came in and toured the new Convention Center. We have a permission, we are going to host the Airport Managers Conference in 2019 at the new Convention Center. So there'll be over 300 airport managers here to show off our airport, I guess is a good way to say it. The last time that St. Clair County hosted Airport Managers Conference was 1991 and the only time they have done that, so. And Jackie, I think that, not knowing that you're going to be here, I wanted to tell you that during the conference, the, it was announced that this article that was on the front page of the paper was best practice for St. Clair County. So thank you for writing such a positive article. It was a shock to me and it is a very positive, if you haven't had a chance to, to read it, I'll send it to you, but thank you, I didn't know you were going to be here. So, is there any questions?
Any questions for Kathy from commissioners? I would just like to make one comment, especially about economic impact. When we were doing the Convention Center, they said that if we were to build that Convention Center, that it would have about a 20 million dollar impact on the county. And yes, as taxpayers in the county, we may have to subsidize that a little bit. Well, the same thing is true with the airport, you know? It makes about a 15 million dollar economic impact on the county and we have to subsidize it to the tune of about 100,000 dollars. Now that money goes around the county many times. Some economists indicate that it may go around the county about five times. Well, that's a 70 million dollar impact on the county. Now it goes out to all the businesses, the restaurants, you name it, in the county and that's, that generates a lot of economic activity. So, very good report.
Yeah, I'd be remiss, 14 years ago when I got on the board, I was on the, man, I spent more time out at the airport than I care to even think about because the operations weren't running well at the time. And it goes back to that thing that I talked about, constant improvement, you know, improving different, 30 different items and stuff and done a great job and our FBO, Brad out there and stuff too, so.
It feels good to be positive, let's put it that way.
Kind of reminds me a little bit of the, the animal control building when you and I first were on the board and the improvements we made out there and as you indicated, after visiting other counties and looking at their facilities, we're, you know, we don't have, we don't have to apologize for our animal control facilities. The same thing true about the airport. I remember what it was like back then, Jeff, and we've made a lot of really nice improvements out there.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, any conceptual initiatives? Okay, no old business, moving on to new business, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority BOD appointments.
Do we have... Send them to the full board?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and to send it to the full board. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carry. The landfill conservation easement agreement, I saw Matt here, thought I did. Are there any questions or concerns about that easement?
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board, support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, thank you, Matt. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carry. The 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program.
I would move that, that improvement program be sent on to the full board.
It's been moved and supported, supported to move it on to the full board. Did a great job with it. And so, up until today, when we had a whole meeting about other needs of the county...
One of the things that it does, Howard, I mean, we started it and then we got away from it, right? And then we bring it back and it's... And then we bring it back and it's just, when you know there's things that are on your radar screen, you can look at it, you can have the discussion, it's just not in one year, I need 2 million, I need 5 million, I need whatever. And then the next thing, you're just, you're buried, you know. So at least this gives opportunity for administration and, you know, finance to kind of get a long-term, you know, plan together on this stuff. So it's a, it's a good document.
Yeah, the county definitely has some needs and it really helps to identify those needs and then plan accordingly so that we can deal appropriately with them as they come up. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Mead and Hunt Agreement, design of the ILS runway 4-22 and the airfield lighting rehab.
Runway 422 is our major runway. It's our instrument landing system that, for our heavy jets as we increase our traffic. The asphalt itself and the electrical is up in the upwards of 21 years old, is deteriorating rapidly. The FAA mandates that our pavement condition index on an ILS runway cannot go low than, lower than 64. We are at 69 currently, so we're basically losing our weight capacity. So this project is the design project, has been approved by FAA and has been approved by M.D. Office of Aeronautics. What will happen is that we're going to completely rehabilitate the asphalt on runway 422 and all the lighting. A backup generator will be installed on the airfield itself, which we do not have, and, I thought there was one other thing, sorry, I lost my train of thought. And the electrical. So basically, this project here is the design for that. The design is estimated at $224,000 and your local share will be $12,000 of the design only. And this is for Mead and Hunt to do our electrical engineering. Oh, I remember, it's the electrical vault. Remember Commissioner Heidemann, how that overheats? So that's up in, upwards of 40 years old, so it's a complete electrical problem, project. So with your permission, we'd like to move forward on the design.
Okay, we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we send it on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions for Kathy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, next one, Resolution 1717, approving sponsor contract for design rehabilitation of runway 4-22, runway 4-22 lighting and rehabilitation of runway 10-22, crack sealing and paint marking.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Resolution 17-20, approving sponsor contract, maintenance of the automatic weather observation system.
I move that we send it on to the full board.
It's been moved and supported by Commissioner Greitop. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And that was a good report.
Thank you.
Smith Creek, Greenfield Activities Report. I would entertain a motion to receive and file that.
So moved?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Information, Other Environmental Public Works Matters. Yes.
Just a quick one, met with the Ag Board yesterday and I think this is following their, two things. The Quasnick property out in Kenoke Township, one of the residents out there donated his property, not to the county, but that it would be in, and our council looked at it also, that that 57 acres will forever be agricultural land, no houses can be built on it, it will be all the way his farmland out there. So that's one of the residents out of Columbus Township. I should talk to Greg on this, but met at the board also and, because it's in the initial stages, our metro planning is working to give him a checklist, but there's a resident out there that potentially will donate 1,500 acres. And that would be a big cost as far as our master plan for St. Clair County, because you get out in the township, there's a lot of rural and agriculture and that would lock up a lot of agricultural land.
Commissioner?
They're donating the property or they're donating the rights?
The rights, not the property.
Not the property.
Just like the other property, the family still owns it and they can sell it to whoever they want. But that property, like the Quasnick property, that has definitely been donated for agricultural rights to the county and that property has to be used for agriculture. The family cannot sell it and let's say somebody says, I'm going to use five acres to build a house on it. That can't happen at that property out in Kenoke Township. That'll be forever farmland. This property out in Lynn Township, 1,500 acres, they can still, the family owns it, they can do what they want with it, but if it does go forward and it's in the initial stages, but our metro planning is working on it and good to give them the necessary checklist, what they need to do. They already have an attorney, the family has an attorney involved, what they want to do with the property, but they have contacted the Ag Board and expect interest to perpetuity to have that always agricultural land.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I have one under Public Works. As many of you know, I was up to the Michigan Association of Counties meeting and while there, I picked up some information regarding the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grants that we've received. I'm sure many of you that have attended our parks or trails see signs up. We just dedicated the, down at the walk over the wetlands, in the county wetlands at the end of the River Walk, and you'll see a sign down there saying that contributions came from Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. In many of those trust fund grants that we receive, it is expected that there be some sort of a local match. And because we have a countywide mileage for Park and Rec and we share that with many of our local communities, 25% of the mileage goes back to townships and cities and municipalities. Since its inception back in 1978, St. Clair County has received up till 2004 about 13.5 million dollars, which, when you think about it, it's pretty incredible, especially when you compare it to other counties of comparable size. Jackson County has gotten 1.4 million. And the reason for that is we are able to make a match to get the grant. Since then, St. Clair County has received about an additional $13 million. Now, about a million of that went to RISA for the Pine River Nature Center. But it's been a great opportunity and I handed out a list of all of the funding and just to mention some of the communities, Algenack, Brockway Township, Clay Township, Cotterville Township, the DNR Park and Recreation, the North Channel Site, the DNR Wildlife Division, St. John's Marsh and St. Clair Flats, East China Township, Greenwood Township, Marine City, Marysville, Port Huron, Port Huron Township, and then St. Clair County. And they have listed here just about every park here, in one way or another. And then St. Clair Township, Wales Township, Port Huron and St. Clair. An impressive list of grants from, to provide park and recreational opportunities for our citizens. Very impressive. Anyway, that's it. Information only. It's the Park and Recreation Financial Documents. I would entertain a motion to receive and file. Been moved and-
Support.
Supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those in favor, it has passed.
I move that we receive and file the package.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to call the Order of the Ways and Means Committee. Whatever roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Ball?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Still here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Do we have any additions, deletions or changes to the agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to accept it as presented.
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we are now going to move to closed session. This will be a very short closed session to go over collective bargaining negotiation strategy. So at this time, I'd like to go on to closed session. Do I need a motion for that?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion?
We need a roll call, vote on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are going to a closed session. We won't be long.
We won't be long. Do we need a motion to reconvene?
Yep. I think you do. We can ask Todd. Do we need a motion to reconvene?
I, I mean, we probably should've done a motion to end closed session, but-
Eh, just go.
Just go.
All right, we have, uh, covered closed session, four A. At this time, do we have any updates? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives? We have none, no old business. Moving on to new business, eight A, the Genoa A, Q O L Healthcare Company, Advanced Care Extension, inmate pharmaceutical.
I move that we send this item on to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
I, I had, I don't know if everybody understands this completely. Um, I had some questions, and I took them to some people that tried to help me understand it, um, and Carrie, you can correct me, and Danielle, correct me if I'm not accurate on this, but what we're, I think we're doing now is we're putting a certain amount of money, and in this case, we're limiting it to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, aside for pharmaceuticals. But we don't always know what that's gonna cost us when we get there. And there are times when we actually run out of money, and when we do, then we put more money in to cover the costs again. It, I kinda compared it to, uh, um, an attorney where you pay him upfront, what's that called?
Retainer.
A retainer. So you put that money out there, and when it's gone, then you're gonna have to put some more money out there. We just never-
Is that what attorneys actually do?
We just never, we don't know what these drugs are gonna cost us, and who's gonna be on what kind of drugs and stuff like that. So I was confused by, when I read this, maybe nobody else was, but I was confused by how it worked. Uh, and Carrie, have I got it close?
Uh, yes, we do limit the contract amount, and then, once it exceeds that amount, we would have to come back to the board, but it is dependent on our inmate population and, um, whatever medications they have. Right now, the plan is to put our pharmaceuticals out for bid in two thousand and eighteen, so this extension will get us through that period.
So, Carrie, we're essentially paying a company to manage our pharmaceuticals cost-effectively?
Yes.
Just for Tommy, you were out of order. Mr. Heideman, go ahead.
No, uh, just to emphasize, this is for inmates pharmaceuticals. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been my understanding that over the years, if someone is incarcerated at the jail, uh, we get almost all of the healthcare costs, pharmaceuticals being included in that. And, and some of the pharmaceuticals, especially, uh, those that are having mental issues, are extremely expensive, you know?
That is correct.
To the extent that we budget, uh, I think the sheriff budgets about a million dollars for healthcare costs total. It's huge.
Any other comments?
You sound presidential.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eight B, Resolution seventeen eighteen, ratifying wage adjustments, Circuit Court Family Division and Probate Court Employees Association.
This and the next one need to be for final action.
This one's for final?
Uh, B and C.
I would so move.
Final action.
These are for final action?
Yes.
So, eight B and eight C.
Okay.
So we have a motion for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? All, uh, do we need a roll call on resolution? I believe you do. We don't? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eight C, Resolution seventeen dash nineteen, ratifying wage adjustments for Circuit Court Family Division Supervisors Association.
Make that motion for final action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, moving on to eight D, District Court Manning Table Request.
Do we move to send it to the full board?
Support.
Do we have any discussion?
That, uh, one sheet, was that from Danielle?
We do have Mike here, do you wanna give us a rundown? He showed up, so.
Get some TED TV time.
Well, thanks, I'm on vacation this week, so I'm glad he, he called me up here, so I didn't have to put a tie on for nothing.
Did you spend that million dollars in Crosswell yet?
Uh, it's, it's one point eight million dollars, and we have not spent it yet. Well, kind of. Uh, just, very briefly, I'm the interim District Court Administrator for the next day and a half. We have a new, uh, District Court Administrator starting on money, we're very excited about, but, uh, it's, it's one of the things Andrea had been working on, uh, for the past few months. Um, during the wage analysis, we discovered that, uh, the District Court here is significantly understaffed, uh, which would represent, um, excuse me, which would indicate why we're down on collections, down on a lot of our customer service areas, uh, implementation of technology, so, um, Andrea did, uh, do some great things with collections, and we've kinda did a, a sample run and found out that we can actually get some money back. So we got about fifty grand back in a very small sample, uh, for about half the year, so we felt that it would be appropriate to dedicate some more folks to collections. Obviously, collections with a court, um, benefits victims in restitution cases, benefits our library, and benefits our general fund as well, so it's a, it's a big benefit. Um, so we are asking for a full-time court clerk three and a part-time, uh, court clerk one, and we're also asking for the, um, probation officer, but that is grant-funded. Um, our mental health court grant is the gold star of the state, um, and we're geared for about thirty people, however, we have about sixty people in it, so we've asked for an increase from the state, and they have granted that, so that's gonna be a wash, so. We anticipate, uh, with the collections clerks, that, uh, we will generate much more revenue than we will bring in, or, excuse me, than we'll expend, so that's our hope. Any questions?
Do we have any other questions? Mike?
Yes. Did you say grant-funded, the one position?
Correct, yeah, the-
The grant four.
The, the mental health court grant has been around for, oh geez, uh, probably nine years. That one's not gonna go away. I know there are some drug court grants that typically, uh, lose steam after about five years. Mental health court grants, because they're partially federal-funded through SAMSA and CMH, uh, that stuff's not gonna go away. We have, in fact, ours keeps going up, um, and there's no inclination that that's gonna go away anytime soon.
We're not looking to backfill this down the road in a year or two?
Uh, no, and, and frankly, if we do, it's a, it's a part-time position, which, you know, is not something that's attached to benefits or any kind of longevity, so that's something that, you know, can come and go.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that I, I was impressed with the reports that you prepared on the cost and the revenue, and I'd like to see that we're addressing those issues.
Thank you. It's, it's important, I know historically, the courts have always been kind of a black hole of money. We wanna be, uh, much more proactive, we're very cognizant of, of the impact that we have in the general fund, and we're trying to do our part.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to eight E, Day Treatment Night Watch Manning Table Request.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board?
Support.
Just for this one, it's, it's very, fairly self-explanatory. Um, you know, we, I'm sure everyone has a, a grandchild, or a nephew, or a child in school where there's just behavior issues abound, um, and we've seen that in our program. Uh, much more, uh, mental health needs, uh, huge, uh, you know, impacts on our schools, on our society, with children who are, uh, having problems, and the parents are having problems, so we felt that by transitioning one of our shift lead folks to a mental health, uh, position, and it is part-time, uh, we can really address those needs. We've kind of done that a little bit, uh, we had a, we had a change in staffing, so we've, um, we had a, an individual who was filling in, and he is phenomenal, he's really, we, it's very rare that we get a male mental health coordinator, or, excuse me, therapist. Historically, it's women, and I will be very honest, women are better at that, um, but it is nice to have that male, uh, a piece to really, uh, interact with some of the youth that we have. Um, so that's, uh, we're gonna request that, it's, it's gonna be a nominal increase, um, and it's something our budget can absorb, we're gonna, we're gonna back down on one of the other line items, but we, we feel it's gonna serve our families and children much better.
Total cost in this appears to be thirteen thousand fourteen dollars. Do we have any other discussions? Any questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to eight F, Airport Manning Table Request.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this, uh, request be sent on to the full board.
Support.
Do anybody need an explanation?
I thought the report was pretty self-explanatory, but if Kathy wants to give us some more information, we're good.
I'd make the motion.
It's already moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eight G, Resolution seventeen twenty-one, Winner Tax Levy.
If motion, we send it to full board.
There you are, tax and spend.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eight H, two thousand and eighteen Pension and Retiree Healthcare Contribution Rates.
Move we send it to the full board?
Support.
I would like an explanation myself, Carrie.
Sure. Um, these contribution rates are a recommendation based on our most recent actuarial evaluation, so what we are proposing is that we fund our pension contribution at a hundred percent of what the actuaries recommend, and, um, for next year, the county will be putting away five and a half percent of payroll towards our healthcare, and that is a one percent increase over what we are putting in in two thousand and seventeen. Our pension contribution went down, so the difference was put towards the retirement healthcare.
Thank you. Yes.
Carrie, um, one other question I had on the, uh, memo from the Retirement Board Trustees, the one section says the Retirement Board of Trustees do not recommend the implementation of actuariales determined two thousand and eighteen contributions. What are they saying there?
Um, the Retirement Board voted to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to fund a hundred percent of the pension contribution, but they did not vote to recommend a hundred percent of the retirement healthcare contribution.
They give you a number, so when you're going through this actuarial report, and we're a hundred million underwater in the healthcare piece, right? So they look at making that up over a period of time.
Right.
They give you that number, and that number, you can't write a check that big, okay? So it's a formality in it, and then, hence, you know, they approve it or deny it, and in years past, it used to always get approved, both pieces of it, but we never wrote the check for that much, because with pension systems, it's just how it works. Now, I will reiterate, we are roughly ninety percent funded right now, if I'm not mistaken, in the pension piece.
Yep, a little over.
The healthcare piece is roughly twenty-eight percent. That's if you maintain a certain level of benefit as you have today. You could go to a hundred percent funding on that tomorrow. Now granted, I don't think anybody would stomach their healthcare that they would like, but you have the ability to make those changes to that. The pension piece is obviously, you, by law, you have to, you know, fund your pension, you know, whatever. The healthcare piece has been the piece that has been in debate, the healthcare piece has been the piece that the county retirees have taken us to court before, two different occasions, that the state, and we're kind of, I think, the state precedent for that, if I'm not mistaken, that we're able to make changes to the, the healthcare portion of it. So, when you see these numbers, and I've been through a lot of the stuff, they, that literally the numbers they give you, you couldn't write a check that big to, to get the hundred percent contribution, so.
Are, are we meeting on the nineteenth for this exact issue? The retiree healthcare, is that the same thing?
No. All right, you, that's the-
That's our investment update, our quarterly investment update.
And that's part of this, what we're talking now?
Uh, well, that's just showing how the fund was doing. This right here, um, the Retirement Board voted to not recommend the actuarial contribution, which for us would be about eleven million dollars next year.
Hey, I, I sit on that board, and it, that was a very confusing, the time, for everyone that sat there, because nobody, I mean, we all understood what we wanted to do, but there are some people that want us to fund it at a hundred percent, and we would just have to lay off everybody to have the money to do it. So it, it's something that can't be done, we don't have the money to do it, but-
It's happened every fourteen, it's happened for fourteen years, and it's happened-
Right.
-two years pre, even with Howard, you know, with those kind, and that's just-
It's just, but it's tough, when you're sitting there, and you're, you know, they're telling you what you, what you're supposed to have, and, I mean, we would love to, if, if we had an extra eleven million just sitting around in a checking account somewhere, you would wanna put it in investment and, and do the right thing with it, but it's not there, so.
Mr. Chairman, uh, my recollection is, though, that, uh, we are making progress toward the funding goals of the healthcare, and that's a good thing for our employees, but there's, clearly, there's, um, some other changes that are gonna have to be made in the long term.
I'm gonna go from memory, but, uh, this is the same thing, the funds that we have are meeting at on Wednesday at the bank. Those funds, sixty-five months ago, so five, just short of five and a half years, was at two million, we're currently at about forty-three million. So we have made pretty good gains on our investments and funding of this. Yes, Commissioner Heideman?
Uh, I, I think, uh, we wanna keep in mind the distinction between the two funds. Uh, there's the, the, you know, the pension fund, and, uh, that's, that's required by state law. Uh, I think that was pointed out quite clearly with the situation that the city of Port Huron is undergoing, you know? Uh, and then, there's the benefit fund, which primarily is healthcare, and that is not constitutionally required. So we can make adjustments there, but we made a commitment to our employees- that, you know, for many of them, that there would be a healthcare fund available when they retired, and we would like to honor that commitment to them at, at an appropriate level.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any? Seeing none, we have ten, information only. Do you wanna do this as a group or individually?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file information-only items A through E.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I have support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.